Good evening and welcome to the January 24th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. I have a full complement of the board in the room tonight, which means I don't have to roll call vote anyone. And yeah, we're gonna start with public comment. Quick note about public comment. We're gonna give everybody two minutes. Please make sure it is something that we are not already going to cover on the agenda this evening. Please be respectful. Please do productive comments. And also, we need names and addresses at the top. So if anybody has anything to say?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Jonathan Massia, 153 Harvard Road in Stowe. I'm just really trying to figure out a better way to communicate with the Select Board and the town administrator. I've had flooding issues going on for nine years now. I have deteriorating road conditions and thrown my road in my home. And you know, I've been emailing folks, I think over the period of a year, with no response. And today I've found out from the police chief that it was the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee that I could submit something to. In addition to this, our wells unfortunately tested positive for PFAS. To the best of my knowledge, no one in town has reached out to any of my neighbors since we were newly found area since October. And the state had had the meeting with you folks. States unfortunately opened up testing in and around our area. And more wells are now contaminated with PFAS, as is the runoff. I've voiced concerns about the runoff because it goes over to conservation land or Conservation Trust land. I may not have the verbiage correct on that. And then it goes off to what land into streams that lead feed into lizard brood. And it's contaminated with PFAS along with what other chemicals, et cetera, are coming down. And I don't receive a response. So I'm really just here to try to figure out, you know, a way to get a better line of communication. I have been blamed publicly over the past three years in meetings for causing dangerous hazardous road conditions, causing flooding, having water percolating from a wall, having water percolating from a driveway. It took me three and a half years to get a response from, I think, the third interim highway director to get permission to open up that section of the driveway. And now I am three and a half years beyond, I'm sorry, I'm three years beyond the statute of limitations for the insurance claim for that. So again, I'm really just here, you know, to try to figure out a way to work productively with you folks. So if somebody could give me an email by the end of the week or middle of next week as to any updates that you have, anything that's going on planning wise, you know, how I might be able to communicate with you folks so that when I'm in this situation, I'm not waiting three and a half years and then blamed in meetings, you know, for having water percolating out of a pipe because I don't hear back from the highway department. So it's just, it's frustrating.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think that's under two. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, anyone else? Is anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
No? All right, we're gonna move on to board members' comments. If anyone has anything they would like to say? I'm gonna start with that one.
So we just got news that Cliff Smith just passed away this past weekend. For people who've lived in town for a while, he lives right across from Shelburne Farm and has been an institution. He and his wife walk on the street almost every day. He's been, he was an assistant professor at BU in Entrepreneurial Studies and also was a, I think, a serial entrepreneur and venture capitalist. And has recently served on the Stowe Conservation Trust Board. It's just a huge loss. I had no idea. I guess he's just been sick of brief time. So just wanna send out condolences to his wife and kids who also live in town and a real loss for Stowe.
Um Hector?
Uh, just to acknowledge and wish a happy new year to all those that follow the lunar new year on Sunday started the Year of the Rabbit.
Excellent. Courtney?
Nothing.
No? All right, take it away.
Uh, thank you. As of January 19th, we have eight COVID cases in town for 7.34% positivity rate. Both the state and county are still over 12%. The, uh, we have scheduled a special Select Board meeting next Tuesday to discuss the Lake Boone Dam project. It will be 7:00 PM fully on Zoom. Information can be found on our website and social media. If folks have questions in advance of the meeting, we ask they be sent to questions@stowe-ma.gov. This does not eliminate a Q and A during that meeting, but it would help prepare answers if folks have questions in advance. Uh, I would like to remind folks, it is not a public hearing, it is a meeting. And will be led by the Chair of the Select Board. So it will be at the discretion of the Chair, who speaks and how long they speak. So just as a comment, it is not a public hearing, it is a Select Board meeting. Final call, that we are hosting a Municipal Citizens Academy, hopefully, to start next Thursday, February 2nd. This will give residents a glimpse into municipal departments from administration to fire and social services. Our eight-week class will begin on February 2nd, Thursday evening, with applications being accepted now. There is no cost, but residents must be over 18. We currently only have a handful of applications and we are debating whether or not it will run with such few applicants. So stay tuned. Hopefully, we will be able to move forward with it. If not, we will reschedule and hope for better interest.
Well, Courtney had a question.
Somebody inquired of me if that is via Zoom and if it would be recorded.
It is not. The benefit to the academy is people are here in person and get to participate one-on-one.
Got it.
Um, perhaps in the future, we will do some type of webinar series, but that is not what this is meant to be. This is a hands-on, in-person experience.
Great.
My next discussions with Denise is February 1st from 9:30 to 11:00 for open discussion at the Pompo Community Center. My February special guest is Tina McAndrew, our library director. So folks that have questions of me or the library or just wanna come and chat, we have folks that come every month just to see what's going on and see what kind of questions others have. Also, during that time period, there's private appointments, appointments available. So if folks wanna meet with me in private, you can call the Pompo front desk and make an appointment. Uh, and just to give the board a heads up, last week I met with the Callings Foundation to discuss their 2023 events. I'm gonna be working with our Public Safety Department heads to put together a comprehensive plan for the year so that we can approve all of their events in one meeting versus having to, you know, keep tabs and try and catch them before they have an event. So I have all of their events. We know which ones have pyrotechnics, which ones will have tanks, which ones will have airplanes. So we'll put all that together and run it by the departments and then bring it before you all, before their meetings, their events for the year start. And that is it tonight.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, we have two recognitions. Recognition requests. Is someone on from ConCon?
I think Ingeborg's gonna kick us off with it.
Oh, all right. Ingeborg.
Well, so, um, I, I'm speaking for the ConCon now?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Cause I am on the Conservation Commission and the Commission has looked, been looking forward to having the town recognize World Wetlands Day, especially in light of some of the proposed wetland restoration at the golf course of the Driving Range location, which most people know is flooded and muddy most of the time, but it's not officially a wetland yet. So we were hoping that the board, the Stowe Select Board, would join the Commission in recognizing World Wetlands Day. And what we also wanna do is have events, webinars, some stuff like that, and then have a outdoor activity to walk the Driving Range and have let people see all the everything I'm doing. And it's gonna be really cool.
Sounds great. Does anyone have any questions for Ingeborg? No?
Okay.
All right.
I'm gonna take a vote.
Yep, wanna take a vote? I'll take a motion. I'm gonna have Courtney.
Did you decide who's doing motions?
Yep, Courtney is, and are you seconding?
I'm seconding.
Thank you.
I move that the Stowe Select Board join with the Stowe Conservation Commission in proclaiming February 2nd, 2023 as the World Wetlands Day in Stowe in order to highlight the value of wetlands, increase awareness of their importance, and promote actions that will lead to their conservation and restoration. We recognize the potential of restoring wetlands at Stowe Acres Driving Range here in Stowe with a goal of enhancing floodplains, wildlife habitat, and climate resilience.
Second. Ingeborg, two seconds.
Oh, it's okay. No, you can have it.
It's yours.
All right, any further discussion? Nope. All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And that's unanimous.
Well, thank you, I'll say from the ConCon.
Thank you for bringing it up. All right. Next up, we have a Black History Month proclamation requested by Nastja. Would you like to speak, Kathy?
Sure. Abby Morgan, 20 railroad Ave. And I didn't write the proclamation, but the person who did couldn't be here tonight. It's quite long. Do you want me to read it? I'd be happy not to, but if you'd like me to, I will.
I'm okay. It's, it's in our minutes. It's on the website. It'll be, yep, yep, that's fine.
Um, so the only, the reason why we requested it again this year, you folks approved one last year for February to be Black History Month. And just on the website, it wasn't on the proclamations page, which is why we asked to do it again this year. So also, we are currently working on the Mapledale Conservation Project where we've met twice now and we will meet again next month. Um, I don't have a formal date for you, but we'd be happy to extend that meeting date to anybody who's interested in coming up with ways that we can honor the Black history that's here in Stowe and really just get a whole community behind that conservation project. And we've been working on that for a while.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? All right, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve and sign the Black History Month proclamation as presented by the Neshoba Area Social Justice Alliance and proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month in Stowe.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
For proclamations, are you expecting to have requests every year or once it's proclaimed and on the website is that? I'm just curious how much you wanna hear from us.
I don't know. Uh, my feeling is that once it's there, it's there, that it doesn't have to be a yearly renewal, but that's, I'm just speaking for myself. So Hector?
I noticed that we just approved February 2023 as Black History Month.
Right. Right. Um, right, so I think we would have to approve just February as Black History Month.
Right.
Um, if we remove it, remove it, not remove it, um, is that something that you all would be comfortable with?
Should we amend it? To amend it?
Just to amend the, the motion?
And remove it?
And remove it?
I'm happy with that. I mean, I think having to do this kind of thing every year is not.
It's nice to.
It's nice to re, to be reminded of it, I think, but I'm also fine just having it standing.
I think it's, it's for reminding the public.
Yeah.
And, um, it's an opportunity to announce a particular program that might be associated with it, um, that year.
Okay.
So, you know, I mean, I'm fine either way, but I don't think it's bad to have to do it.
What do you think, Ellen?
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
But when we talked about doing proclamations, there's the idea that there was gonna be activities in town to tie into it. So it's the opportunity to, to remind us to, to do that.
So every year?
So we will be.
Every year is what you're hearing. All right, fantastic. Yeah, that would be great because then you can bring whatever project is being worked on or different things to it. And that's great. You can use the same proclamation. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we've got a few appointments tonight. The first one is Joshua Mondragon to the position of Call Firefighter EMT. Is Joshua on? Is he meant to be on?
No, the chief is on, but I can certainly speak to it.
Whoever wants to.
Uh, so as you'll see in your packet, Joshua is an active firefighter at Hanscom. He's a firefighter one-two, trained, fully qualified. We think he'll make a great addition to the department and fit in quite seamlessly based on his training. In addition, he's an active military. He's in, in the military. So I think he'll be great and ask that you ratify the appointment this evening.
Great. Does anybody have any questions?
You said he's active military?
I believe he's active still in the military.
Or active guard?
I don't know. His resume's on my desk.
He's a Air Force veteran and he's working at Hanscom.
He's a veteran?
Oh, so yeah, he must just be working at Hanscom fully.
Any other questions? All right, I'll take a motion.
I move to appoint Joshua Mondragon to the position of Call Firefighter EMT for the Stowe Fire Department, effective immediately for a term expiring June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that's unanimous. All right, we have an appointment to the Council on Aging. Um, I believe I C L Arthur.
Yes, he is.
Hi Al, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, I'm a relatively new resident to Stowe. I've been here for four years. And I've been attending the COA board meetings for the last year as an associate.
Great.
So Allison, our COA Director, speaks very highly of Al, thinks he'll be a great addition, was very excited that he wanted to move up from associate to full board member. We think he'll do really great things on the Council on Aging.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions for Al?
No.
Thank you for stepping up. And that, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Al Firth Arthur to the Council on Aging for an indefinite term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's unanimous. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love that it's an indefinite term. Like you're here forever. Alrighty, and then, is Andrew Groh on? Oh, there he is. Hi Andrew, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Um, all right, uh, you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself? You were being nominated to be on the Randall Library Building Exterior Design Committee.
Yeah, uh, I've been in Stowe since 2016. Um, I've got three young kids who are frequent users of the library. Uh, and I've worked for the last 20-plus years as an architect in Massachusetts, working on public projects, including public libraries. So I've got a real vested interest in the improvement of the Randall Public Library and, uh, hope to help, um, the community create consensus around the new exterior design.
Sounds awesome.
Yeah.
Did anyone have any questions for Andrew? I'm, I'm starting with you. I'm just turning this way.
Thrilled to have an architect on the building.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah, that's exciting.
Do you, um, do you have an affinity for, for old buildings as well as for modern architecture?
One of my first projects about 20 years ago was working on the Cambridge Public Library. And I was in charge of designing the iteration of the restoration with the addition to that. So I've got a love of all architecture, old and new.
Great, glad to hear it.
Aw.
Thank you.
That's a nice library, too.
Yeah, yeah, that's awesome. Um, all right, well, on that, I'm gonna take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Andrew Groh to the Randall Library Building Exterior Design Committee to serve until the exterior design of the building has been approved by the Randall Library Building Committee 2.0.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much for stepping up. We appreciate it.
Is there a question? Is that, we have a full complement now?
We have full, both committees.
Oh, fantastic.
And, and if I can just add, so both committees have started meeting. Uh, we had a joint kickoff meeting with both, um, and we expect the next few meetings to be a joint committee meetings until sort of the exterior committee branches off and focuses on what they need to for, you know, four or five months or so.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, so next, we have an update on the Neshoba Regional High School building project. Is it that soon?
Madam Chair, thank you. I had a con bearing presence, but I believe.
Thank you.
You have these.
We never got them.
They never came up to you. Okay, here they are.
So I appreciate you.
I'll, I'll have Bridgette order those to you for posting, for meeting materials.
Thank you.
Given that I may vertically challenge the owl, I think I'll sit here. So, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, to the entire committee, to town administrators, Ms. Demkowski. Last time I was here, we, uh, I was here with Ms. Beverio, the Chair of our school committee and also on our school building committee. Unfortunately, she couldn't come tonight because of conflict, so I sublong her regrets, but in future meetings she'll be joining me. This is what we were talking about in our last meeting in terms of, of the monthly board briefs. And I believe we have a schedule of some returns and I promise the board briefs will be brief briefs as we put this information together. The first brief labeled number one is the general information we talked about last time. So we don't need to go into that in detail this evening.
So this is Select Board Brief?
Uh, this.
Or this is All Board Brief?
It's all the boards, so.
Yeah, I was plucked.
The, the, and, and we're glad you were. The idea of the brief is it's, it's our pacing mechanism for educating our town boards as well as our citizens on the progress of the project as we are in Phase Four now. So before I, I talk about the information in brief two, I will say that, um, uh, earlier this month, or, excuse me, it was now on the other side of the break, it was December 20th, if I recall, the MSBA did approve our project to move forward into what is now Stage Four of this process. And this is really where all the design goes into play. I have weekly meetings with the architects and, and the planners and our OPM, meeting with educators and all sorts of folks. We met with, uh, facilities and the town of Bolton the other day in terms of code and regulations and those types of things. So those are well underway. And the idea behind the brief is that it should give you a sense of each building committee meeting, that we have a summary of what was the focus of that meeting and any forecast of what may be coming up. Put it into brief form, send out to our select boards. And I'm also, uh, when I have engagements, uh, for instance, I have engagements coming up with the Council on Aging in each of our towns. We solidified our dates today for what are going to be our high school tours. We have, uh, two dates in April and then we're gonna have a date in September for the project. So there'll be more for that, so I'm always looking to do some community engagements out there. So at our libraries and, and Council on Agings and just in any forum that is willing to invite me. Turning to Board Brief Two, I would, what I wanted to, to focus on tonight is you'll see the conceptual rendering. What we're up to now looks nothing like this. It looks nothing like this at all. If, this is just a very box sketch of where the location of the building is. And you'll note that the location of the building really is boxed in. It's the only place we can put it because of the Tennessee pipeline that flows to the north, to the wetlands, uh, just to the west, and to the east, the existing building. So, uh, there are some iterations on this and we're having some conversations with Conservation in Bolton around how to minimize the impact. The building doesn't, and the, the hardscapes do not go into the wetland area at all. However, they do impede the buffer zone. There's a hundred-foot buffer zone to the wetlands. And so we'll be working on those issues throughout. The focus of this past building committee meeting was funding the project. And so to just brief this board, uh, for regional school systems, when it comes time to incur debt, there are two methodologies that are outlined in Massachusetts General Law 7116. And it's provisions D as in dog and as in neighbor. 16D is the provision that we go to incur debt. So for instance, when the high school renovation was done in 1998, 7116D was that process. And the process is thus. Once we have estimates from the town, uh, from, uh, the, the architects and the OPM, those estimates are then presented to the school building committee, who will then take a vote of recommendation to forward on to the Neshoba Regional School Committee. And it's the Neshoba Regional School Committee that incurs the debt for the project. Once the vote is taken to incur the debt, there's a seven-day requirement to provide that information to the chairs of the three Select Boards of the town. At which time, then the chairs have 60 days to conduct a town meeting on the project. So you can imagine there are some, there are some procedures around that. We're not expected to get all of our complete estimates till the middle or even towards the end of May. So we're really looking toward September as that estimated, uh, time period where this would go before our towns. The second methodology is 7116N. And that is the methodology that, uh, it can be utilized if we so chose, but I don't think it would be good advice as, as we turn to our three towns. But it is a one-regional methodology. And that 7116N empowers the committee, the committee by two-thirds of a vote can do what is called a regional election. And the regional election would be done at the sole cost of the district, not on the towns. And that is a one-person, one-vote aggregate of the three towns in that process. So in these pathways, there could be multiple methodologies for ultimately funding the project. A key moment for us is that the MSBA, we submit, uh, the completion, uh, not our, the completion, I, I, forgive me, the percentage, it's, it's, I think it's 50% of the drawings are due end of June, June 27th. That submission is done. The MSBA will take a vote, uh, for us to move into the next phase of Stage Five, which is funding, in the first week of August. Let's presume for a moment that they vote approval of that. Once they vote approval for funding, the school system has 120 days to produce to the MSBA that the, their towns support that funding. So all of that put together, what does that mean for us? If we conduct, if we, uh, time our meetings in such a way that we have town meetings in September on the ballot initiative? And then, uh, if all three towns were to approve at that point, we would have approval for school funding and give that to the MSBA. If one of our towns does not approve that, we can then, by two-thirds of a vote of the school committee, a vote to then, uh, institute 71N, 16N in the process. And as long as that is done within the 120-day window of the MSBA, that second methodology could also, uh, produce funding for the project. So our attorney, uh, Pierre Mello, attended the board meeting on that date and gave a presentation on this. And all of our, um, meetings are recorded and posted to our website. So if any of our residents out there and if you on the board have any questions regarding that conversation with our school building committee and attorney Mello, you can view that, um, online. So, uh, with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Ellen?
Just a quick question on the 16N. Who has the authority to decide to make that call and what, if we did the aggregate vote?
It lies with the school committee.
The school committee, not the building committee.
Yeah, lies with those.
That's right.
So the building committee has no authority in that way. They essentially are managing the project. When it comes to funding, it is clearly the school committee, yep.
Anyone else?
No, I think that was good. While you were talking, I was going through the overview. I forget what this thing is called, bar chart or something.
Yeah.
And you called schematic design, which you were indicating might be around 50% design, which is pretty.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it would give the towns a good visual of what this would look like.
We had an exciting meeting just last week. It was the first meeting we had in terms of what the facade would look like, potentially. And it's, it's, it's looking at various styles and meeting materials. So we don't know what it would look like on a building. It was given certain options, what looks that? And, and as, as we informed, um, the architects, that our community is looking for a modern building that has traditional qualities to it. This is some of the feedback that we've gathered. So they're looking at those types of designs.
I just would say, I mean, I'm hearing from lots of people very concerned about the price tag, that it was going, it's going, the numbers are over what we paid for Minuteman, which we know is the most expensive kind of school to build. I mean, obviously, that was a few years ago, but, so, I, you know, I know it's too early to have estimates, but I, I think we have to be really cognizant that, I think there's a good chance that a town might vote it down. So just be, you know, I pass that on to Leia, I'm passing it on to you directly.
Madam Chair, if I put a question mark on that, can I respond?
Sure.
Ms. Sturgis, thank you for that, um, because you actually, um, have prompted me to also put another. have prompted me to also put another piece in there that is, is important and I think our residents need to know. At that same board meeting in December, the MSBA, recognizing the escalating cost of construction is, is frankly, at a, at a rate right now that it hasn't been in decades. So they've put a freeze on certain applications and projects around the state, and they increased the ceiling limit of three-hundred-and-sixty dollars a square foot to three-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars a square foot, which helps tremendously. They also increased the site cost percentage from eight percent to ten percent. Two moves that are gonna benefit our project and reimbursable costs to the MSBA, from the MSBA. So that, that was very encouraging for us. Our cost estimates are very conservative cost estimates. They built in significant escalations based upon the market over the past year. So we'll be watching that. The vote to do a construction manager-at-risk project also helps us, because by choosing to go construction manager-at-risk, that gives our OPM the authority to, while, before, we can begin construction on the project before the plans are complete. So in other words, before we're for architectural renderings, as long as the grounds and foundational renderings are completed, we can begin on that project. Thus, you can contract, you close your window, and that helps reduce your cost of the project, overall cost of the project. As opposed to the design, bid, build is, you design it, you build it, you pay your bill at the end. And so I think those methodologies are gonna help us along the way. Those cost estimates will be coming, so the real numbers will be coming. End of May, beginning of June is, is the time that we're looking at. So we'll be briefing this board as we get closer to certainty on that. So your point is well taken, Ms. Serge. And if I, if I may say, there was one other thing that came from that meeting that I think is particularly noteworthy for our community and to this board. The MSBA, after the meeting, reached out to my office and requested that our educational plan, as part of the submission to the MSBA, be posted on their website as an exemplar plan for our regional school district.
That's great.
And I, and I mentioned that, not because I'm, I'm looking necessarily for the feather in, in our Nishoba capsule, but I will at any time because I'm proud of our school system. What it says is the thoughtfulness, the degree of participation from students, residents, town officials, in the visioning process and constructing the project set up for what was really an outstanding educational plan that combined with educator's vision of what a high-quality education looks like for our students, MSBA recognized that and is citing us by posting our plan on their website as a model.
That's great. Congratulations. Any other questions? Thank you for your time, we'll look forward to seeing you the next brief.
Next month, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Library Director Tina McAndrew.
Let me show my screen, hang on a sec. I'm just gonna get there.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for having me, the Select Board, thank you very much. Do you wanna, do you wanna sit right there?
Hear me, yeah.
This way or close?
I think you need to come closer.
Real sorry, we're gonna be on the hot tape.
That's okay.
We don't bite. We can't reach you anywhere.
So I'll just be giving a very brief update and entertaining questions if you have them. So just real quick, obviously, highlights of our year were that we had the town vote and approve a new Randall. We've been able to expand adult programs and create a volunteer program, which has been huge. I'm not gonna read it, you can read it yourself, but it was, you know, we've just really been trying really hard to promote adult programs. We have a huge children's program, youth services following, so I really am trying to get more adults involved. So we do take and make crafts, we have great partnership with Sustainable Stow. So we're trying to continue that. Again, not reading this, but in the below, you, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but I think if COVID taught us one thing, it taught us a lot. But one thing in library land is that people didn't know how many online resources we had to offer, and so our statistics have steadily increased. A couple of them were less than last fiscal year, but for the most part, and all of our in-person statistics have gone up as well. So overall, for, you know, a kind of tentative time in library land, as I call it, it's, it's been really positive for us. Denise alluded to this, but we voted for the new library. We hired an owner's project manager in November and contracted Design Lab in December.
January.
So then there's a very aggressive timeline for schematic design, which should be done by the fall. So we're hoping to move out of our library by summer, with construction starting in November, with any luck. So that's really exciting. Let's see. So these are all the people, wonderful organizations that fund me. I have the Randall Trust, I have Barbie Wolfenden and Maureen Bush here, they're two of my trustees. And they give about twenty thousand dollars a year to the library. The Hale High School Fund supports us by paying for all of our reference materials, which are online mostly, but still still in print. The Second Century Fund as well, they help fund children's materials. And the Friends, I have Lisa Lavina here, she's the president this year. And we've really worked hard to revamp the Friends, this, the Friends organization this year, including a new fund for adult programs. They have consistently funded children's programming, and now they fund adults, adult programming. And they've also incorporated the fundraising for what is being called Revitalize Randall, and there's an actual page that they've created for more information. And Denise on the town website for any updates that you might wanna see, all the building committee meetings and everything that have started meeting. I'm not going to go into this either, but Denise had us do lots of goals, and we're happy to say that we met many of them. We were able to establish a homebound delivery program this year to meet patrons who can't physically come to the library, so materials are delivered to them. Phil Belts has started hosting Great Decisions at the library, where a bunch of people talk about foreign affairs. I'm promoting a lot of professional development, we went find free. And again, the volunteer program, we have about fifteen volunteers now that come in and shelve. We almost have too many volunteers, so, sometimes. And I just wanted to share this, I'm not going to read it, but it's always nice when we get feedback from our town. And I have to say that I have an amazingly wonderful staff, and they have an amazing work ethic, and they really do put on, it's not even a put on, but there's always a happy face when you go into the library and people are really, are really noticing that, so. And I think that's it, and thank you for voting in Andrew, 'cause I already had put him on my page, but this is the Board of Trustees, Building Committees, Exterior Design Committee, and that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes. Well, you gonna move, where are you gonna move to?
Well, I think we've been talking about the basement here, the lower level. We had preliminary talks with tech, with Ron L. IT and Technology from Minuteman Library Network to see if it would all work for us, and it looks like it will, so unless something major changes, I think that's where we'll be. Yeah.
If I can add, so as the superintendent alluded to, you know, costs are escalating. And one of our concerns is we don't wanna have a beautiful new renovated library and then not be able to put new furniture or new furnishings. So we're trying to think ahead and figure out where we can save some money and moving them, 'cause originally in the preliminary budget, they had rental and stuff. So we're gonna try and avoid that. We've met Tina, seen the space, we have three cubicle desks already set up. And then there, there should be plenty of room to have some books down there, public computers. We've talked about putting a tent in the parking lot for the warmer months that they can have programs outside. We actually have the lawn and the picnic tables to be able to do some stuff outside. And then we'll just have to figure out the rest of the materials, where they'll be and how that will be handled. I don't know that Tina has figured out yet exactly if it will be sort of like the COVID model or if we're gonna be able to do programming twelve months out of the year downstairs. They are only expecting a twelve-month construction schedule, so fingers crossed that it's twelve months. We should know more, they were doing a 3D building scan yesterday, so we should start getting some discussions on, you know, the interior of the existing structure and what surprises might, we might encounter when we start renovations.
That's exciting.
Yeah, it's super exciting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Now, our monthly meeting with Chief Solisi.
Hello, it's been a while, actually.
Since last year.
Since last year, yes. I got four things on tonight, so.
You really do.
I do. So we'll start with the wellness program, I believe? Okay. So in the past couple of years, I've been really trying to ensure that the mental well-being of the police officers are intact, because you can't help other people if, if you're struggling yourself. So I was actually approached by one of the officers as well to help facilitate this, where we're going to start allowing the officers to exercise while actually on duty, only for thirty minutes. This won't take away from any services offered to the town, the certain parameters that are gonna be in place where you have to have two officers working, you can't just have the one officer, which does happen every once in a while. What also is part of this is that if, I like to call it the checkup from the neck up, so if an officer-
When I read that, I was like, mm, okay.
Yeah, if an officer goes and does like a mental health kind of checkup with a licensed person, and they just, they don't have to tell me what the report was, 'cause there's some privacy issues with that. But if they do, if I get a report that they did go, then they would get rewarded with four hours of time off that they can use at their time, at their leisure. So I think it's a good program, it's really been accepted by the officers and the dispatchers as well. They want, this was again approached to me from them on some of the things in here. So this is just to put it actually to paper, to put a policy in place for this program here. So can you answer any questions on that? Victor?
I was just gonna say, I think it's wonderful that the department is interested in pursuing this and is trying to implement it. I can't agree with you more than when you said they can't help others, they can't help themselves, so, thank you.
You're welcome, and this will actually utilize, I don't know if you remember, like Sergeant Gogan donated a lot of equipment, workout equipment. Well, this will be, they'll get to use it now.
Hector?
Well, skip that part since she already covered it.
Yep.
My next part is thirty minutes? What can you do in thirty minutes if that also includes changing, showering?
It better be quick, then.
Yeah.
It's gonna be your full, it's not gonna be your full workout, I think it's just to get your blood pumping, right?
So it's not intended to be a full workout?
No, it's, I wouldn't say it's gonna be intended for a full workout.
Okay.
The only, there's only like four or five, there's four machines down there and some free weights, so you're not gonna be able to, you know, maybe run for fifteen, twenty, fifteen, twenty minutes, you can take a quick shower. We've been, you know, when we went to the academy, I only had a couple of minutes to hop in. You're in the military, you know, you know.
Yeah, I remember those.
So you know. But it's also, like, we don't want them exhausted either, 'cause the main focus of their, their being on shift is to, to serve the town. But this will help, you know, we wanna keep officers health, healthy, we wanna keep their heart healthy, we wanna keep their body healthy. Police officers, you know, have history of hypertensive hip problems, knee problems, like, you know, we wanna keep people in shape, so this is one way of being able to do that.
That's great.
Thanks, Rob.
As well as also the mental aspect, too, so.
That's great.
Courtney?
Ellen? No? All right, I'm gonna take a motion, we're gonna move you through on this.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the addition of the Wellness Program Policy to Stow Police Department Policy, as presented by the Police Chief Solisi at this meeting.
Second. All right, any further discretion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Can you just declare that unanimous with-
I'm sorry, that's unanimous. Man, I missed one. All right, next.
So the hiring of a police lieutenant. So Darren Threan, who's been with us for thirty-one years, started out as a dispatcher like myself, worked his way up, he has put in his retirement papers, and his effective date of retirement is gonna be May eleventh. So as we've done in the past with this board, we've came up with a process to hi, to promote a sergeant. Now, what's gonna happen is we need a lieutenant to replace him. The process that we had in the past was more for an internal position, promoting from within. Right now, the two sergeants that we have have only a, have a year on, and we're looking for somebody with at least three years of supervisory experience. So this process that we're putting in place is going to bring in an outside consulting agency that does police hiring, that they do police officers, they also do lieutenants, and they also run for, they also help out with the chief's process, too. The process that I'm presenting today is going to include a written test, and then based on that written test, the top five individuals we call back for an assessment center. Those individuals will be ranked and scored. The company that does it, say that they presented it in a way that they don't know the individual, they're just basing things off scores. That's not gonna be our final decision, the final decision will come down to an interview after that, which will be made up of myself, Denise, Dolores. And it's worked well in the past that we've had two residents from, sit on that interview panel, and I'd continue that same process. I don't know who those people are yet, I didn't wanna jump to them just yet before I got the approval from the board, before we went ahead and did anything. But the, as I stated in the letter, the lieutenant is not part of the union. It's a separate position outside of the union, like myself. And it's more for my second-in-command as well as, you know, to cover, to, to cover for me if I'm not there, and also to run the department, as we, you know, are establishing our mission here to get us, to, to our goal. So that's pretty much everything. I did, I did submit this to the union for their review, they didn't have any questions. As I do with every policy, I always make sure that we, before I present it to the board, I always make sure that they have an opportunity to, was their opinion on any impact that they're gonna have? So that was presented to them, and they came back with nothing, so.
All right, any questions from the board?
I just have to say, when I saw that, I still think of him as Officer Threan, 'cause he was our dear officer, right? He started the year we moved here, so it just makes me really sad, it's like, well, it explains why I think of him as like, he's my police officer, 'cause he's been here the whole time, so.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a big loss. And I know that he wants to stay on for another year after he retires to continue to help out with the police department, which is typical of what a lot of our retirees do. But yeah, it's, I can see that, like, you know, I still, he still has a lot of the photos in his office, like, all the dare kids that he has. So, and then he's like, oh, I had that kid, I had that kid, so yeah, absolutely.
And he still remembers a lot of them, which I-
Yes.
That was my mind, you know?
Absolutely.
It's great. But this looks like a great process.
That's a lot of really nice years of service.
Yes, yes it is, I hope we can do something, you know, it's hard for some times for, on the receiving end of like when we do something big, you know, for somebody. So if I'm gonna do it, you know, if he watches tonight, I'm not gonna tell him when it's gonna happen. And we'll figure something out, 'cause he didn't put, you know, that, it's a long career. And so I wanna recognize that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I was appreciative that, you know, he, he gave us a lot of notice. So the goal would be actually to have the new person, the new lieutenant, in place prior, like, a couple of weeks prior, so that we could have some transition. And then that way, the new lieutenant would just be, you know, a smooth transition for, for that one.
That's cool. Any other questions? It's quite a job description.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's, it's, it's a lot, you know, they're, they're pretty much like, you know, if I'm, if I'm not there, they, they have to run the department. So there's a lot of responsibility and liability that goes along with it.
Alright, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the lieutenant hiring policy as presented by Police Chief Michael Silesi at this meeting.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous. Alright, now you can put your traffic safety advisory committee.
I was, um it was, it was a nice uh vote by the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee that I get to come again. And, so, and talk, I told them I, I had no problem doing that, which one are we doing first here?
Uh, stop sign, Old Marlboro Road.
Stop sign, Old Marlboro Road. Uh, so as I presented it, or actually sent the board a letter back in December, we started our pilot program. Which, uh, has been in, in effect, we have two phases of it, which is going southbound on Gleesondale Road, if you try to turn onto Marlboro Road, you have to actually go around, uh, Hollow Garden and then make the loop. Um, so that's the first phase of it, um, I've heard from some residents, it's working well, we're still reviewing the traffic data um, that we had, I had to pull up the, the tubes because of the snowstorm and can't plow with the traffic counter on the road. So we're still reviewing all of that information. Uh, but the second part of this is going to be, uh, taking the traffic that's going north onto Marlboro Road that's coming on on Gleesondale. And making that now go out onto, uh, Gleesondale on the south side of Hollow Garden. Or before the church, basically, before the church, take the left and go on that side. Everybody following me on that one? Cuz they're both Marlboro Road.
Right.
Um, so, this stop sign, we're gonna make people stop at the end of Marlboro Road before turning onto Gleesondale. That's where the stop sign will go. Um, and so, to do that, we need the select board to approve a stop sign that goes in that location. Uh, and that's what I'm here for, is to get that approval for that stop sign to go there. Uh, once that goes there, once we get the approval, there's a process, we have to have it posted for a couple of weeks, we have to put it in the paper. Um, and that's where that stop sign is gonna go. So all the traffic is going to now, once we get to phase two, will be going on the south side of the Hollow Garden, uh, in and out, so people will have to make the turn to the rest of the way on Marlboro Road. This will hopefully, um cause people to keep, continue slowing, can, continue to be slow on Marlboro Road, because that's what the biggest complaint is, it's trucks and speed. We have been working with the homeowner, uh, or the two homeowners, I should say, with the church and the farm out back. Because we wanna make sure that we keep their driveways, uh, available for, not only for them, their personal cars, but they do get deliveries and farm outback and as well as emergency personnel. So, we're making sure when we put our barricades in place that they will still have access, uh, to their property and everything. So that's what we're looking at right now, and these are the low cost fixes right now, this is just to see if it works. The data will be a little skewed as we, time goes, because the construction on Chestnut Street and the EverSource project is going to shut down that section of roadway for, and I don't know the time on that, so, there will be zero traffic, or very little traffic for a time period.
It'll be a great success.
Yeah, it'll be. So therefore, we are trying to, um, you know, so we'll, we'll keep this up as long as like we can get some good legitimate like data in, and then that way we can reevaluate and say, did this really work, did it work? If it did work, there's other things we could do, you could do pavement, eh, you know, uh, you could redo the pavement and make the garden bigger. You know, so we could always look at that avenue of things, but we always wanna, we wanna make sure that what we're doing is actually working, so.
I have a quick question, so the stop sign that we're approving, this is part of the temporary pilot program, this is not like we're saying there's gonna be a stop sign there forever and ever, this is like a temporary stop sign, okay.
We could even have to visit it though, if we do make it permanent.
Oh, got it.
But yes, for the time.
For this, for this vote right now, it's just for a, okay.
For this, for this, yes.
Alright, yes. Can I just clarify though, people really have to stop at a turn anyways, regardless of whether there's a stop sign.
You still have to stop sign.
Right, it's just, right, 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 right. So it just reinforces that you have to stop.
Yeah, you have to stop anyway, in intersecting way, when you're going from a low volume to a high volume, you have to stop anyway.
Right. Yep.
So this is just reminding people.
An extra reminder, got it.
Yeah.
Hector?
I've taken that turn after the discussion and noticed that that little road is a little narrow. Is there any concern about cars not can two cars, I'm not worried about trucks, but can two cars fit side by side down that road?
So we looked at it, we looked at the, uh, we looked at the, the width of it, and we also looked at the, the turning radius, and cars can fit, trucks can fit, uh. So, I mean, if people are stopped, they're not gonna, you know, next to each other, we're gonna have a traffic jam wait.
So if a truck, if an eighteen wheeler is coming south on Gleesondale and wants to turn onto Marlboro.
Everyone's gonna have to back up.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is people.
Right, and then, so the encouragement is to go down to, to the lights.
Right.
Right, isn't, is, it's not restricted for trucks?
So, the, the problem with restricting it is, we can't restrict just a stow road. We have to, it, because it's a connecting to another town, we need both towns on board.
I just, I think of it as there's some sign, but I'm.
Yeah, so we tried, we went to the town of Hudson and they were not for restricting, uh, their side of it, so we couldn't, we couldn't just restrict our side.
So this is the creative way to divert traffic.
The creative way to, yes, right, without restricting, right. Well, and I've, see, I mean, especially coming north, I guess, right? I mean, that stop sign to me is almost as important, because people just fly out of there and think they can just jump onto Gleesondale.
Right, so what's gonna happen now is they're go- they're gonna be a barricade there now, and you have to go.
Yeah, that's awesome, I mean, that's, that's the part I, I'm particularly fond of the idea, even, I mean, now with the bridge being under construction, people know they, they're not gonna get much farther, but still. As someone who lives right there. Right?
I could comment, but I won't. They see it as a challenge, they see that green light.
Yeah, yeah.
We're trying, you know, I know that Marlboro Road, uh, the residents have been very vocal um, to this board and to, to other committees, onto doing something, and so, this is our next phase of, of trying to do something, um, so.
What a great little road it is if you didn't have a bunch of cut through traffic, it's just this, it's really quiet, well, it's.
Yes. And I think you've gotten some positive feedback on phase one of this already from some of the neighbors.
Yes, yeah, I was out there picking up the traffic data and, um, one of the residents, Matt Henderson, came out, he said that, he, he observed that it was working. It worked great, so.
Um, alright, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the placement of a stop sign at Old Marlboro Road and Gleesondale Road and sign the notice of traffic regulation as presented by Police Chief Michael Silesi for the TSAC Traffic Safety Advisory Committee at this meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I do have a question.
Yep.
The way this motion reads, it does not indicate in any way that this is related to the phasing or as a temporary feature. So I don't know if it needs to be, um, amended to say a temporary stop sign or as associated with phase, is it phase one?
Yeah, so this would be phase two.
Phase two.
So we can always come back later and say, we can have it removed. And if we take out everything, having a stop sign there is not a bad thing either, because people can still make that left hand turn. So, um, so they can still, the barricade's removed, they can make the right to go up Gleesondale, and they can still make the left.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not averse to that at all, I'm just saying that in our minutes, it's, you know, we'll look back at this in a few months and we won't know that unless we have phenomenal memories, that this is temporary. Or part of phase two, I personally am fine with it as a permanent feature. Um, or as the town selects or amends the plan in some future phase, you'd have to come back if there's a change. So, I'm okay with it, I was mostly just pointing it out.
Okay.
So, it's, to, to me, it's, either way, it's fine, cuz if you, if you, if we just do a part of the phase and then we remove it, we remove everything, and then we find that we really need it, and we'll come back, just ask for it to be put back in place.
Well, I think the way the vote is, it's a permanent structure, so you would have to come back and ask to remove it.
Right.
So, as it stands, the stop sign will remain even regardless of what the traffic pattern is. Unless the board wants to make it a temporary stop sign.
That sounds like there's gonna be value to have a stop sign regardless.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I think too.
I have a question too.
Okay.
Is it Old Marlboro Road or Marlboro Road, or does it matter?
So it is Marlboro Road.
Okay, so we're gonna just re.
Although the sign says Old Marlboro.
I was gonna say, your letter says Old Marlboro, at least.
So after I wrote the letter, we had a meeting at the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee about names of roads. Boxborough, Boxborough, which I know is, you know, O, O, O R O. Um, and then the question is, is it Old Marlboro Road, or is it Marlboro Road, according to what we have on file, it's Marlboro Road. According to the sign down there, it says Old Marlboro Road. So, we're working on that as part of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee to make sure that our roads, our signs reflect what the roads are actually named.
Okay. Um, do we want to?
Amend the motion?
Let's just amend the motion and just do a tempor- just change it to temporary stop sign.
At Marlboro Road.
At Marlboro Road.
You want?
So I'm sorry, back to temporary?
I don't, I would, I would.
You'd be fine with it just being?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a link.
Okay, great, so it's just gonna be a stop sign, fantastic, at Marlboro Road. At Marlboro Road.
South, yeah, south of, uh, Hollow Garden.
Do you have the actual, like, no?
Alright, so are we ready to call the vote?
I said, uh, you said, no drivers on Old Marlboro, south of the traffic island must stop, but that's what the, the, what your sign name will say.
Okay. But it says Old Marlboro, do we just have to cross off the old?
Okay. According to Google Maps, we don't have an Old Marlboro Road still.
Right.
I was wondering why you came up here.
It's already pulled up.
Alright.
Do you want me to remove this, or is it okay to just?
Remove it.
Again, this was the topic.
Move it again.
I move to approve placement of a stop sign at Marlboro Road and Gleesondale Road and sign the notice of traffic regulation as presented by Police Police Chief Michael Silesi for the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee at this meeting.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? No, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Next.
Next one, last one. Um, so, we have the traffic rules and regulations, uh, in, in the town here. Um, and we were reviewing those to see what we could do during snow emergencies. Uh, we only have, uh, a no all night parking regulation between December first and, uh, March thirty first. And that currently states that you can't park your car on a road longer than, uh, an hour, uh, between one and six. So, what hour? AM, sorry, one AM and six AM, thank you. Um, what we're looking for is to be able, there are two things we're looking for. To just to make the all night, uh, no all night parking, um just, uh, it, from one AM to six AM, no longer just an hour on the street. Uh, the reason behind it is at three o'clock in the morning, if we have to plow, it's basically for plowing, really. Um, a lot of towns have this already, uh, surrounding towns have no parking overnight, and the, um this wouldn't apply, like, if your car was broken down, you called the police department and said, you know, my car's broken down, or you have some sort of exigent circumstances that you had to leave the car, we know how to get ahold of you, and we could, before we did any sort of action, we could get ahold of you and say, hey, listen, you're blocking this, or you're doing this, we'd always make that attempt, um, to, to get, to do something with the individual before uh, any sort of, uh, ticketing would happen. The second one is, we have no ability to declare a snow emergency in Stowe at this time. So, if we have, like, a big storm come through, um, in the middle of the day and people parked everywhere, um you know, it's hard for our plows to make it around all these cars. Um, and again, it would always be, we'd no- put notice out, we would tell, you know, social media, put it on the news, we'd make any, every available um, way to tell people that, hey, listen, just don't park on the road, you know, our highway employees work really, really hard, they, they're up for, you know, uh, a day or more. Uh, even this last one, they did a great job clearing the roads, and we're just trying to make it easier for them. To be able to, to clear the roads, to keep it safe, to make sure our emergency personnel can get through, to make sure people can use our roadways. So, they do a good job, it's just a way for us, um, to be able to, to help them, you know, just don't park on the roads, we're just asking between this time and this time. You know, we got, we're getting six inches of snow, stay off the roads anyway, please don't park your car on the roadway. So, those are the two, uh, things that we're looking at.
Um, any questions?
Yes.
I, how many cars, I'm not, I don't wanna number, but are there lots of cars that park on roads in Stowe?
You try to picture the roads that have, that are wide enough to park on.
It's getting weird.
My street.
Yeah.
Your street is not wide.
I can tell you right now, this is not like we're going around trying to ticket people, so.
Well, I guess, I, the.
So.
Tickets are pretty low.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, fifty dollars, that's a hit, but twenty's okay.
Twenty, but I, I think, I don't think we've written a ticket in, for overnight parking in a very, very long time, I'll put it that way. It's more of a tool for us to say, you know, y- your car is parked here, really, we're trying to plow, can you get your car on the roadway?
Right, right.
So.
And I, I like the fact, I'm sorry, I, I like the fact that, um we'll be sensitive to s- unique circumstances why.
Yes.
Car's there, so I think that's, um I like that policy, so.
Yeah. Ready, any other questions?
Yeah. Does snow emergencies, do you usually, I mean, it's been so long since I lived someplace that had one, do, do you set hours on it, or do you just sort of say it's ineffective till we tell you it's not an event?
It all depends on how length, how long the storm is, so, um, if we can make that judgment call, then we would be able to. But it would also be, um, for cleanup too, cuz it's not just during the storm.
No, right, exactly.
For cleanup.
Right.
Um, so, and it would be consultation with the town administrator, the fire chief, highway superintendent, so. But it wouldn't be like, okay, it's gonna be two to four, but it could be two to four, like, you know.
No, but, right, no, but, you basically say, I mean, essentially, it's, you know, there's a storm going on, you know, there's an emergency and you're gonna, you know, wait till you hear it's not, basically, yeah, okay.
Cool. Alright, um, why don't, we'll move them separately.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move to approve an amendment to Stowe's traffic rules and regulations, Article Four, Section Three, to modify the all night winter parking ban as presented by Police Chief Michael Silesi for the TSAC at this meeting.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous.
I move to approve the addition of Section Four, Declared Snow Emergency, to Stowe's Traffic Rules and Regulations, Article Four. As presented by Police Chief Michael Silesi for the TSAC at this meeting.
Second.
Um, any further discussion?
I see a typo in here, is, is on this declared section four.
Okay.
So, it's the second. Last sentence, police shall have the authority to ticket until any vehicle that are, so vehicles that are, vehicles or vehicle that is. I leave that up to you.
I'll say vehicle that is in the roadway.
Just you know, grammarly.
No.
Type it in, I'm joking. It is not the be all and end all.
Alright, um.
I'll add as amended to my motion.
Okay.
No, that isn't, our, our motion isn't amended.
I understand.
Oh, fine.
The rules and regulations doesn't amend them.
Addition of Section Four as amended.
Ah, I see what you're saying, second then.
Okay, great, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous.
Thank you. Well, thanks for all the work.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
See you next month. Um, alright, town administrator update on our budgets.
That was a core report.
So it's a lot of information.
Oh, this is a lot of information.
This is fantastic. It's very difficult to verbalize, obviously, because everything is in its own spreadsheet and then its own sub spreadsheet. Um, so I gave you the cover letter to just sort of break it down and give you a snapshot of where we stand.
Yeah.
Um, in a nutshell, we received two, just over two million dollars, we have physically received all of that funding to date. And we, through the board, have allocated one point eight million dollars, and the breakdown is what we have allocated. Um, and then I took it further to tell you what has been spent of the funding that's been allocated. We have, um, a total of we are at three hundred and I think fourteen. Two hundred ninety-four thousand that has, um, that can still be allocated. Keep in mind as well that we allocated a hundred thousand dollars towards community initiated projects, we've had no requests. Um, I would say at some point, we should look, if there are other projects, we would look to put that back in the bank and reallocate that out. But this is where we stand, I'm happy to answer questions, cuz as I said, it is a lot of information, you have all the individual spreadsheets. A couple. A couple other things to note, so we have to fully allocate the funding by the end of twenty twenty-four and spend it by twenty twenty-six. In December, um, so I learned, I attended the Mass Municipal meetings on Friday and Saturday and it, it came out that in December, the government voted to change the ARPA spending and it can now be spent on anything. There were parameters, it was any municipal purpose, which pretty much was anything anyways.
Right.
Now they've pretty much removed all limits.
Great.
Um, although there, there is, I had a conversation with Representative Tryhan's office this morning, yesterday. Um, and there has been some conversations in Congress with the, um, disputing, um, parties that, uh, there may be some appetite to start recalling ARPA funds that have not been spent.
Oh.
Um, I've been told that that is just a pipe dream that has been thrown out, but. Just keep it in mind, if we hear anything more, I'll pass it along, um, but I've been told that, that, that's been, you know, rumored, um, so. Um, I think we're fine, um, they're clearly not gonna come after folks that have a couple hundred thousand left. Even if they do, they'd be looking at the municipalities and the cities that have, you know, received a hundred million dollars in COVID funds, so. So happy to answer questions or, um, discuss more specifics on any of the specific allocations that you have.
Yep, Hector?
So preliminary calculations is about three hundred thousand unallocated funds.
Yes.
I had a number of people approach me about the whole Hudson Road intersection thing, saying that they really wish that we could go the complete route on that intersection and I noticed that a lot of the, uh, the complete route being a left turn lane and a traffic light. And I noticed that the solution that we recommended to the planning board or supported the planning board on is just the traffic light and that's gonna be paid for by ARPA funds. Could the remaining be attributed to that?
So a couple things, ARPA funds are not paying for the traffic signal. That was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're just paying for the plan that they came and presented. The problem with the Hudson Road intersection is the state bridge is not wide enough. We don't have the funding. I mean, the Sudbury Road Bridge that we're looking at repairing is in the millions of dollars. Um, we don't, we clearly don't have enough money in the remaining funds for something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think.
And also that brought it into a state level oversight too.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not a town.
Yeah, I knew it would, but I was just hoping they could go for the whole thing rather.
That's not why, that's why we didn't want to do it.
Yeah, no, we start, even with the two million in total, we wouldn't have had enough to complete that whole intersection. So no, um, that would not, um, work for that.
Wasn't there some discussion when they presented, um, the options that the, at some point, the state will have to revisit that bridge, you know, for its own safety and, and capacity reasons? And then that would be the time to.
Deal with the left hand turn.
To get a left hand turn lane in.
I was hoping we could accelerate it.
With the state?
Well, it's a safety issue. We're trying to address a public safety issue.
I don't, yeah, but it's unless the bridge is cr- I mean, this is my own feeling on this, but I think unless the bridge is crumbling, they're not coming. So I think this.
I kinda realize too that if you have a left turn lane there, unless you have probably a couple of spots.
Yeah, it's gonna back up.
It's.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, so we might as well just have it be light cycles because.
Also, does the town want another bridge project after, please, you know, it'll be about twenty years.
Well, let's get through the dam.
I know. We still have next meeting.
And then Sudbury Road Bridge, and then we can worry about.
Um, alright, I need, um, the ones where you had hold, is it just that you've sort of saved that money for, okay, just wanna make sure. I just want to, I'd like to commend you on spending this money so thoughtfully too. I think, um, and, and the board, as we voted for it. I think this was the smartest way to sort of take that windfall in and the most efficient way to take it in and really, um, get the most bang for our buck as it came in. So I'm, I'm really pleased to see all of the, all of the things that were able to happen for it. And remind people that we still have money allocated for community funded projects.
Yeah, so that, that was my question, how do people know about that?
So we put something out, didn't we?
We did originally, but.
Yep.
But it's not, we don't continue this, continuously post it.
Yeah.
Um, so I certainly can put another call out.
Maybe worth that. Cause I was just thinking, I don't know any of the background of this gentleman who came spoke, you know, if there's a drainage issue there on Hudson Road and Ridgewood Road. You know, maybe that's something that, if it's a hazard, I don't, I don't know the background, but that kind of thing, you know, looking at color repair and that kinda stuff.
Is that the complaint of runoff from the, uh?
It's, it's mostly a civil matter between a private business and a private homeowner.
Understood, okay.
In that situation.
Yep, so that is, yeah.
Um, Ellen?
I, I was, wasn't I a big fan of the community initiated projects at the beginning, cause I thought we wouldn't get any interest. I'd love to see that put to the library, honestly.
Oh.
I feel like, I mean, what better community initiated project than we voted to renovate our library and God knows, we could use the money to offset the tax base, so, um, I mean, I don't know if we need to, I mean.
Could we do that at this point?
I don't know if we could or not.
So it's not on hit and vote, but we can, yeah, we can, I can put that on, I think that's a great use of funding.
No, no, I know, but.
Yeah, that's, that would be fantastic. I, I, I think that's a phenomenal idea. Anybody opposed to putting that on a?
What about the other three hundred as well?
Well, I mean, we gotta keep a little something in our backyard.
Yeah, we have another year.
I just don't wanna lose that three hundred.
No, 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 we won't.
If, if, if it comes.
We will call an emergency meeting if we need to.
It's all going to PFAS.
Are there any other things that we might need to consider that might also want attention?
Yes.
I don't have anything in mind, but it's just, like, I haven't had any chance to.
I do, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, there are, you know, obviously, we always have projects, um, I would likely come back, I'm looking, I'm waiting on an estimate for PFAS for the next year. As you see, we've, when I put this report together, we'd only spent ninety-eight thousand of the five hundred that was allocated. The, um, estimated amount for fiscal twenty-three was about three hundred thousand, but we got a lot of that from the previous articles. I believe the estimate for fiscal twenty-four will be three hundred and somewhat thousand. So once I calculate it all out, I may say, can we take some of that three hundred thousand left and put it back towards PFAS? I may ask at some point to go back and add some more to the discretionary fund so that we can close out, again, it's those small projects. Um, when folks call and say, oh, we don't have enough money for this, we don't have enough money for that, we've been able to use that funding to cover those things. So I would ask that unless we have a specific project, we sort of keep that two hundred ninety something thousand, um.
Okay.
And look at some of the, because quite candidly, all of the projects that we have going on are coming in over. Um, you'll see that, um, the Lower Village Water Study cost us a little more, the Hudson Road Traffic Signal Study cost us a little more. So I'd rather leave a buffer so that we can make sure that the ones we've allocated are complete.
Sure.
If we have some run over, so.
Sure.
Um, I, I would prefer not to spend that.
Um, can I ask then for our next meeting after that? Can we put on the agenda to discuss as a board, um, what to do with the community initiated projects, hundred thousand dollars?
When you say the next meeting after that, you mean our next meeting?
I, I do, I do not mean this meeting on Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, well, that's a special meeting, yes.
Right, I mean, I mean the next regular meeting.
Our next regular meeting.
Um, and then if you wanna bring something, we can talk about the library, we can split the baby in half, we can do all the things. But I think it would be, um, uh, nice to have a healthy discussion about what to do with it, because I do think if no one's come to us with anything over the last two years, um, it is just money that we, at this point, um, should put into something else, so. Cool.
I have one other question, just, so we paid for the procurement, um, person for this, this current year, is that gonna go into the regular budget for next year or is that not?
So, uh, at this point, so yes and no, um, because we've allocated sixty-five thousand, um, it will carry into next fiscal year, so we will put the additional portion in the budget, um, for fiscal twenty-four, and then the plan will be fiscal twenty-five, but we'll have to be fully funded within the general fund budget. Unless we still have funding to reallocate.
Alright, any other questions?
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Like I said, I maintain the spreadsheets anyways, so I was just trying to verbalize it for.
Yeah.
A letter.
Yeah.
That's great.
Um, alright, let's move on to meeting minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Joyce, for another great set of minutes.
Yep.
Yeah.
So this is for January tenth?
She struggled with these ones. There was a lot of presentation.
Yes.
There was, there was a lot happening. It was a lot.
So I had one thing and I wasn't here, so I'm not sure if this is a good comment. It was about the Hudson Road. Alternative one, alternative all three, and then it said, alternative three proposes one travel lane in each direction on Great Road with no westbound turn lane and a lead green phase for westbound. The signal would be synchronized with the light at Harvest Road.
Both.
Yes.
Or both.
That's what it's called?
That's Harvest Road, yes.
I was like.
That was Harvard Road, no, no.
I did, um, also in the light, there's another one there.
Oh. You get a traffic light, you get a traffic light.
Okay, then it's perfect.
Yep, alright, excellent.
I didn't know that had a name.
It does.
I had to Google Maps it too.
Is yours? It does?
Yeah, I had to look it up on Google Maps myself, cause I thought Harvard Road initially too, and then.
Yeah, alright.
Alright, um, any other questions, comments, notes? No, alright, I will take a motion.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of January tenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting as drafted.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Alright, anybody have questions on correspondence?
There's a lot more information that was provided by the, uh, Green Advisory Committee.
Uh, well, I think it was, yes.
Additional information.
Yes.
Yes, they had some additional information, uh, I recommended that they put it in a memo form to you. If you had questions and needed them to come back, uh, we could certainly schedule time, but.
Yeah.
Let's see, they were asking for us to support their, their, uh, building code. But that wasn't for this meeting and it'll come in the future.
Well, I think that was what they were supposed to be presenting to us. I think that they didn't get to it in the forty-five minutes that we had allocated for it, unfortunately, so.
So would it, would it be kind to them to just briefly put it on a future agenda pretty soon now to, to, um, support that?
I.
I would wait until we have the warrant.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, we don't have a warrant article, so you could either, uh, when we get that, have a conversation or the night that we go through the warrant. If you wanted to, you know, stop, we, we usually pick a handful of articles to support, you can discuss that one.
Yep, great.
Um.
I was.
I thought the two, the, um, the, the two, I mean, I know these were letters that were sent to, um, I believe all the boards. The letter about the maintenance building. It's the comment about, and I know this isn't really for our business, but the comment about, um, wanting to see a plan for, uh, the south course on Snow Acres before having a building planned. You know, that was kinda seemingly directly impact the butters. I just, I was struck by the two letters, um, also actually more the Lower Village zoning, uh, map boundaries. Letter, and I know those aren't really our business, but, um, sort of way that we can check in with other boards to see if that's can move in a healthy way.
Which one are you talking about?
So, um, sorry, let me clarify.
Yeah.
Getting tired.
Matt Gallagher's.
So I'll go to the second one first, so the Lower Village zoning map boundaries from Lee Hill Debrant.
Okay. Yep.
Um, it sounds like that. Would that be an article in town meeting to change those, those boundaries?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So that would really be a request for the planning board.
It would be a request from the homeowner to change the boundaries.
She'd have to do a petition.
It would have to come, it would have to come through the select board's office, then the planning board would have to hold a public hearing in accordance with the bylaws.
So apparently it's a group of homeowners, I mean, there's one in particular who's sent the letter.
Mm-hmm.
If it's affecting the individual property, then it has to come from the homeowner or homeowners.
Got it.
If it's a citizen's petition affecting other properties, then it would be a citizen's petition that follows the same process. Would have to come through this board and then be submitted to the planning board to hold a public hearing.
Great. And that has not happened at this point, correct?
I have not received anything.
Okay.
Is Lee aware of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Good, that's.
It's all we need to?
No, it's the.
Yep.
Yeah, and I would just comment on the other letter, um. I, in my opinion, it's not under the purview of the zoning board to ask for a master plan on someone's private property. They could petition every individual thing they wanna do, there's no requirement, it, it's quite frankly, out of the purview of the zoning board to ask for that.
Well, it's, you know, I mean, I I think any of us that, that live across from a piece of woodland, if it becomes developed, it's not, not a lot of fun or some open piece of land. It's, it's a disappointment to have that changed, so.
I agree, but I think this whole project has been discussed for now three years and maybe not the maintenance building, but the com- the concept of moving the driving range and having to take down two buildings, so in theory, if they're taking down their maintenance sheds, they have to put something up. My concern, quite candidly, would be if the zoning board, um, reacts to requests like this, what's gonna happen when the developer starts working on the plan that was presented to the town and accepted three years ago, if people now don't like, you know, what's gonna go in there next door? The cottage style apartments or buildings that are gonna be built. To me, this has all been discussed, we've had these public conversations and just like a homeowner, if you meet the bylaws and you meet the zoning, you should be, you should have the ability to develop your property, um, as it meets code.
Absolutely.
So my concern is that the projects are gonna be sidetracked because, um, of concerns that, yes, aesthetically might not be what people like. But it's compliant, legal, and meets our bylaw.
Maybe another way to look at this and not to drag this out, but, um, is, is that it shows me that, um, as I think we've seen other times, that there's a moment where people are funding a project, the, the reality of it comes closer and they then, um, are going to try to voice their, their concerns, um, and see if they can be met.
Right.
So. Thank you.
Okay.
I had a question about the trail of flowers, which I'd never heard of before.
Well, it's cause we don't have it.
That was my question, do we have it? We're not part of the A R T, right? Cause we got that big break along.
Track road.
Track road and.
Yeah.
Back behind, uh, the orchard. So they just send it to us so we know what's going on around us?
I'll be honest, this is the first time I've seen it.
Yeah, me too.
I don't really know what, um, what it is, I don't believe, even though it mentions, so it doesn't talk about, um, the plantings, but it says that we're not part of the paved A R R T, so they didn't do anything in Stowe, but I guess it's letting us know what they did on the other areas of the trail and, you know, should we.
If we wanna be.
Should we eventually get to that part that we're paving track road or having an extension? They can do some plantings.
I think, I'm maybe mistaken, but I think the man that sent us the information may have spearheaded this in Maynard.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Just had the idea and he thought, well, wouldn't it be nice to?
Well, wouldn't it be nice if we had it everywhere? Yeah, no, I think it's great.
And, and, um, you know, organized it to some degree, and I think it's.
I just wasn't sure, something that happened that I, well, there's so much that goes on that I'm not aware of that, I just thought this might be one more thing, but.
Yep, yep.
So I mean, Maynard, no. Spread to, spread to act.
Alright, uh, any other comments? Nope, well, then I'll take that last motion.
I'm here, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Thank you all. Oh my goodness. Now I'm gonna go home and take all the next.